Right, welcome everybody. Thank you very much for joining us this morning for this S and R Policy Committee. Meeting is open to the public and it's being webcast. And we've received no public questions or petitions for today's meeting. If you could just switch phones off to silent and there's no fire test plans for today. I will just ask every member of the committee to introduce themselves and then ask the officers in attendance to also do the same. My name is Tom Hunt, I'm the leader of the council and Chair of this committee and I'll start on my left.
I'm the councillor on the left, I'm a member for Broomhill and Sherwell and Chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee.
Thanks Douglas Johnson, Chair of Housing and Member for City Ward.
David Barker, councillor for Richmond Ward.
councillor Dale, councillor for Shaggy and Braxton and Chair of Children and Families.
Fran Bellbin, councillor for Firth Park Ward and Deputy Chair of the Committee.
Ben Misscore, councillor in Park and Arbuthnot Ward and Chair of Transport, Regeneration and Climate.
councillor Jordan, Chair of Western Street Team.
chef of Mohammed Ekklesal Ward.
Curtis Crossland, councillor for Baiton and Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure.
Martin Smith, councillor for Doran Topley and Chair of the Economic Development Skills and Culture Committee.
Thank you all very much and if I can start on my left over here with Claire, thank you.
Hi everyone, Claire Taylor, Chief Operating Officer.
Morning.
Greg Fell, Director of Public Health Integrated Commissioning.
Morning everyone, James Anderson, Director of Policy and Democratic Engagement.
Good morning, Kate Josephs, Chief Executive.
It's every time.
It is every time. Morning, David Hollis, General Councillor.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Good morning, Philip Brogry, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Thank you very much everybody. We've received apologies from councillor Caillum and councillor Barker is substituting and councillor Nas has said to send apologies this morning as well. So just to confirm, there's no items that contain exempt information. Are there any members who wish to declare an interest in any item of business on the agenda? councillor Agenzio.
Just on the last item on declaring, there is a bit about declaring Sheffield City Ossantra, I work for City Ossantra, just in case I'm declaring that here.
Thank you very much indeed. Okay, item four, minutes of the previous meeting which was three weeks ago on the 25th of September. Are members happy to approve those minutes as a correct record of the meeting? Brilliant, thank you. So item five, as I said, we've received no public questions for today's meeting, no petitions either, there's no member questions. Item number seven is retirement of staff. Now normally this report contains a range of different names and we don't go through them all. This time this report contains just one name, so I think I will say on behalf of everybody, thank you for Peter Lamb's 54 years of service to this council as a driver. That is an astonishing amount of public service, so thank you very much Peter for all of your work and our members happy to approve that record and join me in thanking Peter for all of that work for the council. Thank you everybody. Item number eight is our work programme and with that let me hand over to Craig.
Thank you Chair. Members have got the updated work programme in their pack, item eight. Since the last meeting, there's a couple of new items in there and a couple of amended items there set out on page 27. You'll recall at the last meeting, we discussed the next meeting in November and the volume of business on that draft agenda. We've managed to get that down to a more manageable seven items now, although there are some quite big items there. Members are asked to approve the work programme.
Thank you very much. councillor Crossland.
Thank you Chair. With regards to the winter fuel point on December, I've got two questions really. Firstly councillor Hunt, have you written to the Chancellor yet to call for the cut to be suspended as requested by full council? And secondly, with this now being in December, I think I'm writing saying that the cut-off for pensions credit to receive the winter fuel payment is December the 21st. So us discussing the council's response in December doesn't really shout that we care about our pensioners in this city?
Thank you. This week, I think members will be pleased to know the council is writing out to all pensioners in the city who we have identified, who we think are eligible for pension credit but who may not be currently receiving it. And that letter is going out and a note will be sent to all members today with a copy of that letter, so that if people are raising it with any members here, you will know what's been sent out. And we're encouraging people to sign up to receive pension credit because we know that this is a financial support that currently people are not, not enough people are aware that they can get. So I think this is a good thing. I have not yet written to the Chancellor and we will deal with the council's response to the motion when it comes forward. And it's, you know, there's a range of different things in there, but it will be really helpful when we do respond to the motion to be able to get some response back from the team about the uptake that we've seen following the council's actions this week. Okay, any other further questions on the work programme? Okay, oh, members happy to approve the work programme? Great, thank you all very much. Item nine is the Sheffield Housing Strategy and we're joined by a number of colleagues who will be presenting the report to us today. And so without further ado, let me hand over. So if you could just briefly introduce yourselves and then give us an overview of the report, please, thank you.
My name's Ajman Ali, I'm the Executive Director of Nable Services who will be presenting the housing strategy this morning and alongside me are some colleagues who can introduce themselves and help answer some of the difficult questions that you might ask.
Thank you. I'm Suzanne Allen and I'm Head of Citywide Housing Services for Sheffield City Council.
I'm Georgina Parkin, Service Manager for Strategic Housing.
Okay, I'll briefly tell you through the report and then we'll open it up to questions and observations. So really delighted that I'm able to present this report to the committee. This is the final draft of the housing strategy for approval. The strategy work started in earnest last year. It is very much evidence-based and informed by two rounds of extensive consultation with the people of Sheffield and our partners. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank all those that participated and took part in that consultation exercise. The insight that we gathered through that process has really been essential in helping to shape this strategy. And I also want to thank colleagues here today, Suzanne, Georgina and Ruth Ward, who have been working really hard on this over the year to get it to this stage. It has taken a significant amount of work on colleagues to do that. So initially this involved analysing several data sources to understand the housing needs and priorities in the city. There was extensive discussions that took place with key stakeholders and this included having working groups with council officers, partners and attendance at multiple forums and meetings, including the task and finish group from Housing Policy Committee as well. The aim of that work has been to ensure that we look at the right challenges and the opportunities and the priorities for housing in the city that have been identified. We had two stages of consultation. The first stage took place back in February and March this year and then members will recall that we presented a draft strategy to this committee in the summer and recommending that we have a further round of consultations, which we did again around August time. And as part of that second round, we commissioned external support from consultants Campbell Teckel and they were specifically charged to reach out to someone who represented groups in the city. And there's a detailed consultation report that sets out some of the outcomes of that consultation in your pack in the appendix. I think it's fair to say that overall from the consultation, there was really strong support for the proposed ambitions and also the priorities that were contained in the strategy that's before you today. And I think that's because people recognise that good quality and affordable housing provision is vital to the wellbeing of our residents and the success of our city. It's a significant contributor to economic growth, jobs in construction, maintenance and the supply chain. So for example, for every pound we spend in construction, there is around three times as much of that value in the local economy. We also know housing gives people early life chances and security, enabling them to live healthy and active lives, attracting new people to live here and be part of our growing prosperity. So this strategy sets that long-term direction for housing to deliver the ambitions in the city goals, our council plan and the new local plan. It focuses on citywide challenges and opportunities and sets out a clear statement of the city's housing needs and ambitions. It's deliberately ambitious and we make no apologies for that. We are an ambitious council, we are an ambitious city and we're ambitious for all those who live and work here. But it's also challenging to deliver, but we won't and we can't shy away from those challenges. And to help us, we've got a number of delivery plans, plans that are in place and will be in place to develop and realise those ambitions. So for example, we already have the Homeless and Rough Sleep and Prevention Strategy. And last month, you'll remember, this committee heard about our innovative work with the Prince of Wales Royal Foundation and the Homeless Programme. Our goal is to end homelessness in our city, make it rare, brief and unrepeated. And next month, we'll bring to this committee the Housing Growth Delivery Plan for your approval. We also have the Older Person's Independent Living Strategy and the work we are doing with the Sheffield Together Partnership to deliver thousands of new homes in the city. So this strategy is about all housing in our city across different tenures, in public and private, and it's also about delivering our three policy drivers of supporting people, creating prosperity and looking after our planet. So turning to the strategy itself, it is a 10-year plan with five key ambitions. Ambition one is to provide more homes and housing choice for people. Ambition two is around reducing housing carbon emissions to net zero by 2030. A third ambition is around providing safe, good quality and comfortable homes for our residents. The fourth one is about creating great and safe neighbourhoods that people are happy to call home. And the final one is around homes and housing services that end homelessness and support healthy and independent lives. So each of these ambitions is accompanied by a series of priorities and they will be delivered over the next 10 years. These are also supported as part of the consultation overwhelmingly and you can see that in the pack, there's some detail around that. There's a set of summarised ambitions in the pack on page 41 of the committee report, if you draw your attention to that. And in terms of moving forward around delivery and approval, so obviously we're asking this committee to approve this strategy this morning and following that, the Housing Policy Committee will be responsible for making sure that the outcomes are achieved and performance is monitored and then we'll bring regular update reports to this committee in line with our normal corporate reporting arrangements. So Chair, I'll stop there and commend this housing strategy for approval to the committee and invite any comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much indeed for presentation and let me just add my own thanks to everybody who's taken part in the two rounds of consultation and to all the members who've taken part in the strategy's development over the last couple of years. Right, I'll then open it up for questions. I see councillor Dale first, councillor Dale please.
Thank you Chair, thank you for the report. Just looking through the report and taking into consideration our council plan and creating a place where all children feel that they belong and all young people can build a successful future, I'm really interested to find out what work we're going to be doing to ensuring that our children's homes will be built in our neighbourhoods and that our care leavers will have appropriate accommodation for transition into supported living within communities. I'm just wondering whether, I know you've got stuff in around supported living for older people, I know that you've spoken to our youth parliament, but have we, did we engage with our care experienced young people? Because in Sheffield, we have passed a motion that, you know, care experience is a protected characteristic and I just can't dig it out of this, it might be somewhere else, but I just can't see it in this report, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Dale. councillor Otten please.
Thanks, yes, thanks for this. I mean, I struggle a little bit with this report, you know, I don't want to diminish the work that's gone into it and the consultation and so on. It strikes me that there's a lot of good ambition in here, but the word strategy, if you're looking up in the dictionary, says it's a plan to achieve a goal and what we have here is the goal and I don't see in this document the plan. If we had, you know, if you ask Ukraine what they're going to do about Russia, you know, if they said, what's your strategy? If they said, we're going to win, right, that's not a strategy. And if they spent 183 pages to say, we're going to win, maybe we'll work with partners in order to win, you'd say you don't have a strategy. So I, my problem with this is that, look, lofty goals, stretch goals, yes, I mean by all means, but stretch goals means you need to think harder about how to achieve them and to say, okay, well, we're going to work with partners, that's, that's great, but it's, well, you know, imagine we're the partners, what do you say to us? We've come to your meeting, you want to deliver this, what do you say to us? That would be my question. Particularly, I mean, I do, you know, some of the goals are lofty but unmeasured, if you like, you know, some more housing, would that, would that meet, even if it's not enough more housing, would that meet the goal? I don't know. The net zero one is very specific and it's extremely challenging and, you know, frankly, if you could deliver that in the whole 10 years rather than just by 2030, I would, I would take that right now. Practically, it's really going to struggle to get anywhere near net zero by 2030. And I think we all know, I think we all know that. And but if we're saying, oh yeah, yeah, we're going to do net zero by 2030 in ambition two, then what does that say about ambitions one, three, four and five in terms of how realistic those are? So, you know, thank you, but please give me some assurance.
Okay, thank you. councillor Misscore please.
I think with the fullness of respect, I do disagree a little with councillor Otten's perhaps downbeat remarks there. I think it's really important to say that, you know, councils need to have ambitious top-tier strategies and that's important so that we can set a framework for how we work together with partners across the city to help guide that collective work and I think this document will help us on that route and we haven't had that before and it should be welcomed. Like councillor Otten has alluded to, I'd particularly like to welcome ambition two, that helps give that really sharp focus to the work that we're doing across the city and we're going to continue to do, working with partners to decarbonise housing. We do know, don't we, that investing in warm homes locally really does pay dividends. Data from UK 100, which this council is a member of as an authority that's ambitious when it comes to climate action, shows that for every one pound invested, over £14 in benefits returned through cheaper bills, better health and wider social benefit. And that's why this ambitious step to decarbonise housing across all sectors of housing really makes sense because we know that to meet our net zero commitments as a city, that is really, really important, but also that fundamentally will give people more money back in their pockets, which will help us to grow our economy. I think also the report notes the challenges that we as a city face in meeting those ambitious targets to decarbonise housing, which we've heard from some of the contributions today. And I think ensuring that we've got enough skilled workers to retrofit those homes and to build new homes to those higher standards is really crucial. And I think to do that, we need to work together as a city. This strategy will really help us in order to do that, but I'm really pleased to see that actually people are stepping up across the city to help us as a city in that effort. So for example, this weekend on Saturday, South Yorkshire Climate Alliance is organising a day conference alongside workers and the community on climate jobs and climate justice. And I think that whole effort as a city is to be welcomed. So I think in some way, I welcome the direction of travel. I think it's really, really important and particularly important to spotlight ambition two. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Misscore. I've come back, I've got three more people who have indicated, so I'll come back in a moment to those questions, but I'll ask the colleagues here to respond. I will just pick up on councillor Otten's point. I think it's worth drawing your attention to what Ajman said around the fact that there will be sitting underneath this, a whole series of delivery plans, which will be about how we operationalise the strategy and work with our partners to realise those ambitions. I'm sure colleagues will pick that point back up again in their response, but I'll hand back over to the team.
Okay, thanks very much for those comments. I think it's really important that we do have a strategy, it's important to have that plan because it sets that direct direction of travel. And I have mentioned in my introduction that we have got a number of delivery plans that will help to enable that to happen and also within the document itself, towards the back of it, there are a whole range of other plans that support that delivery. It will, it will require the joint endeavour of ourselves, the partners and, you know, external bodies, government etcetera, to be able to help deliver some of this. And we're working really hard as a council to be able to harness that resource and making sure that externally people see Sheffield as an opportunity in terms of delivering this housing challenge. It's got so many different, you know, added benefits if we can deliver this in terms of growth, which is really important, that's it, that we've talked about. So we shouldn't shy away from that. Having a plan is important, it sets that direction of travel and so I think councillor Misscore can sum that up quite well. In terms of consultation, councillor Dale, we have consulted extensively with a whole range of organisations and the team will be able to give you some details in terms of that. But I think it's really important to have a balanced housing market, you know, both in terms of making sure that we meet the affordable needs of people that can't afford it, whether it's people who are aspiring to own their homes or whether people want a long-term tenancy in either social or private sector, the quality has to be there. So we need to be, and that's the whole point, I think, of this exercise, it's taken a long time to do and it's been, you know, lots of detailed analysis has gone in, data has gone in to just to understand what some of those needs and challenges are. And so when we look forward in terms of 35, 36,000 properties that we need to build in the city, we need to make sure that what we're building is the right size of properties in the right locations and that meets the needs of all groups within the city. So hopefully, you know, that gives us some assurance that we'll be looking at everybody's needs. But colleagues, if you want to sort of cover that point about the consultation with the council.
Absolutely. Clearly the future homes and current homes for young people in the city are really, really important and we did do specific consultation with youth groups and particularly as well with care leavers and care experienced young people. We're also working closely with colleagues in children's and adult services on meeting requirements. So there are, as you'll be aware, there are separate plans for residential care for both adults and children, but where we work together is saying, that's identifying the requirement and we will support on how they are delivered because all of those homes are in the community, aren't they? And it's about making sure it is that really good offer, particularly the point that you've raised about being, young people being able to stay close, because clearly we've got a policy around stay put and stay close for young people in care. And this has been a challenge for us because as it happens, our current residential care doesn't have, there's only a couple of them that are near or in council housing areas. So this is one of the challenges we're continuing to work on about how we have appropriate move-on accommodation for young people and reinforce really that as well as that initial consultation we've done about what are the requirements, the devil will be in the detail of the delivery over the next 10 years. So there will be iterative plans and those very specific specialist requirements are going to be highlighted and worked on, both in terms of what we directly deliver but what we're doing with the wider partnership. So we've got a huge network of registered housing providers, private developers who want to operate in Sheffield and we will work with them to build really good quality homes that meet needs. And just to say, obviously, you know, I refer to section five as well, which is about making sure people have got support for independent living, which is really critical, isn't just about bricks and mortar. It is about saying, to have that settled home, you've got the right support in place, it isn't difficult for you to live independently. So that absolutely, we're lockstep with the right people.
Great, thank you very much. I've got four members have indicated, so I propose to take all four and then see where we get to. I've got councillor Hurst, councillor Agenzio, councillor Smith, councillor Johnson and we'll go from there. So councillor Hurst please.
Thank you. I welcome this plan, but I have concerns about it. We have a number of very fundamental issues with housing and delivery of housing and homes fit for people in the city. There are a lot of houses that are standing empty, a lot of homes that are standing empty. We're making plans about reaching net zero and yet there was nothing in the housing budget for this year about retrofitting and nothing, I've seen nothing come through. There was about 750 total tops, applications came through in planning last year. I've seen nothing about retrofitting this year coming through in the planning applications. We don't say in here how we're going to build new homes, only that we're going to do it in partnership and we know that in the past, buying off the plan to get numbers there doesn't give us the type and the quality of homes that we need and we know that there are some schemes that are sitting there that have been mothballed. The Newstead Older Person's Independent Living project, for example, is a hole in the ground with expensive guard dogs that are costing us. So I sincerely hope that we don't believe that just writing this high-level ambition, we don't believe that we're acting because like Dorna, I sincerely believe that we need homes for young people in this city so that they can be cared for somewhere near where their families are and life isn't strange for them. And we need to put that plan into action because ambitions aren't actions and planning isn't delivery. We've delayed the Glee's Valley Master Plan, we haven't, I'm sorry, given that the local plan is where it's at in the second round of consultation, I would have hoped to have had this high-level ambition here earlier. I would hope the officers are acting already on the delivery and putting together plans and the funding to support that and not just relying on developers or some future opportunities supporting this because we need to deliver on a housing strategy for the people of Sheffield. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Agenzio please.
I'm going to be positive, I'd be glad to hear. While I think that what councillor Otten and partly councillor Hurst are missing is that without like an overarching, high-tier strategy, you cannot deliver, that's what the problem that we've had in Sheffield is we haven't had a vision. And I think all that we're trying to achieve now as an administration, as a city, is to have ambitious ambitions. have ambitious ambitions that don't just look at one side, they're not siloed. And I'm, you know, I for myself, I'm very pleased that we're not talking just about building houses, but we're talking about building communities and people's health and looking at all the other high-tier strategies that we are developing, because it's not about brick and mortars and, you know, having just the housing. It's about having places where people feel at home. And feeling at home is not just having a roof over your head, it's having everything else that goes around it. So I think I'm very grateful for all the work that's gone into it, because it's been a mammoth task and it's, you know, it's taken a long time. And the other strategies, you know, the delivery strategy, the delivery plans are already in work. Some of them have already been presented here, so I'm very grateful that this has finally got to this point and then we can move on with, you know, delivering with ambition, because I think that is one of the things that we have not been very good in the city in the past. It's we're too humble in a way. We need to get out of that kind of mindset, so thank you very much for it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, Chair. Not too sure where to start. I welcome the fact that we have a draft strategy in front of us. I have a slight difference of opinion to councillor Argentio, that yes, we need an ambition, but without the detailed strategy stroke plans to achieve that, you're not getting anywhere. An analogy, I wish Spurs would win the Premier League every year, but it's clear at the moment we haven't got a plan. In terms of housing, my specific comments are around the needs of the elderly. So if I look at the report, one thing that jumped out at me was a comment that we need to reflect that students are an important group whose housing needs are met. And that there's a call out there for greater emphasis on student housing, which is laudable. But if I look at the housing needs of the elderly, I just worry that we haven't got enough in here about how we're going to develop a plan strategy for how we can encourage elderly people to move into different accommodation. Downsizing is one way of putting it, but unless we build properties that make that an attractive proposition, we are going, we're not going to release family-sized homes that this strategy assumes. I'm sorry if I'm getting the words mixed up a bit here, but I don't think there's enough in there about how we're going to encourage people or make that attractive for people. You spoke about the older persons' independent living strategy. That implies to my ears a different section, people that have specific need, perhaps mobility needs, but it's the active, more active elderly change of the population. The other thing that I didn't see in here, I'd like to see more of, is what we're going to do or what can we do to address one of the fundamental issues that a lot of the homes that we want aren't ones that developers want to build, because they want to build houses and properties that maximise their profit margins and they may not necessarily be the ones that we as a city want. So if you could give us some comments on those two issues, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Smith. Councillor Johnson, please.
Thanks. I just wanted to make two points really. First of all, Asman, you'd said that there's been a lot of work on, and has been a lot of work on for the last year, but I just want to reflect that actually it's been a lot of work on for the last two years. So a lot of the background that was initiated and really thanks to Suzanne and Georgina for persisting with Housing Committee whilst we went through a number of workshops to thrash out some of the issues there. The conversation's moved on a lot since then, but it's important not to forget that background, I think, because the focus then was a lot more on what Housing Committee was doing, a lot more focus on, and right so, on the level of inequality in housing and that, you know, people in the city have very different choices and access to housing that is just good enough for them. And that is in here now, so it's just worth drawing attention to that. It's under Ambition Three. Just making a statement that people on low incomes and more commonly in the private sector are more likely to live in poorer, colder housing. And that's really important, certainly when you bring in the health angle there. And then saying a disproportionate number of households from Black Asian or minoritised ethnic communities live in neighbourhoods with lower-quality private rented sector homes and are more likely to live in overcrowded conditions. And actually, this approach to inequality is fundamental to what we need to do as a city to address housing. But of course, within Housing Committee, we didn't address housing growth. And of course, you'll see in Ambition One, there's the element of providing housing for people who are actually too affluent to find the housing that they want in Sheffield as things stand. And of course, it comes surprise to a lot of people that housing growth doesn't fall within Housing Committee, it's actually in the remit of Transport, Regeneration, Climate Committee, hence this being an overarching committee that's coming here. But I just wanted to reflect on the extent of that background work that went into this and which is still in here. And including some of the stuff about, you know, independent living that comes in later on, there's stuff under the delivery plan under Ambition Five for that, which is really important stuff. It's about homes for people that see them at all points in their lives. And then the second point I want to make is just about the importance of net zero. I think it's fair to say that we, that perhaps we here had a collective wobble about the challenges of net zero. And you will recall, we had a fairly robust discussion about how we address that. I'm going to say, I'm very pleased to see the original wording of retaining the ambition of net zero is back in this rough paper. And that's why I'm happy to support this data. It's actually, after kicking us about, this is actually a good piece of work. This covers a lot. A lot is in the detail there and a lot is more to come. But on the net zero, of course, it's really important and it's why the drive to get to net zero, or as far as we can get down that line, is really important for just the reasons that we were addressing in Housing Committee workshops two years ago, because about that Asman is right to say, there are big challenges in getting net zero. To be fair, there are big challenges on all the things here, because it's right to say that, you know, what's set out in this strategy is ambitious. It will be a challenge to end homelessness, but damn right, it's something we should try and do. And it's the same with net zero. Everything we can do to reduce energy consumption also has the effect of alleviating poverty and inappropriate and insecure housing. So that's why it's important. And actually, from where we were two years ago as chief housing, I am really relieved to see that we've got a housing strategy that actually addresses this overarching approach to what housing is, why it's so important and recognising that some people have more advantages than others. So I'm very happy to support this now.
Great, thank you very much. Right, quite a lot there. I'll come back to the team for comments and then I think I've seen councillor Belbin, councillor Orton, and then we'll draw a line there. If anyone else wants to speak, using, yeah councillor Mohammed. Okay, so we'll come back for a final round. But colleagues, if you want to pick up some of those points, please, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Lots of contributions there and try and sort of capture some of those, I think. I mean, I think you're right councillors, there are, you know, a number of empty properties in the city, not just in the council sector, but we've been working really hard over the last year in terms of reducing that and that number is going down in terms of the number of points that we've got and will continue to do that in earnest. Equally, there are large numbers of empty properties, long-term empty properties in the city, that the team are working really hard to sort of work with owners to be able to bring back into use, but sometimes it does require support, it does require money, investment in those to be able to do that. And that is a challenge in itself. And we are working on that, but always providing that advice and support is key, as well as trying to sort of help owners bring them to the market in an appropriate time. We have made provisions in the HRA business plan in terms of, you know, heating and efficiency and carbon reductions, nowhere near enough. Now, there's a piece of work that's with our commission at the moment with external consultants that is setting out what the, you know, cost will be to bring our own housing stock to net zero, and it's an eye-watering amount. We just haven't got a resource at the moment within the business plan to be able to deal with that and all the other associated priorities and pressures that it contains. So, you know, we are looking forward to see what comes out, you know, from central government in terms of support for that space as well. And that's just in our own stock, you know, there are large numbers of properties that owned by registered providers in the city, they have similar challenges. And I think the strength of the partnership is that we need to work with them to encourage them to influence with them, work with chief executives and RPs and boards to make sure that they also prioritise net zero and put the appropriate resources there as well to achieve that target. And even a greater challenge is owner occupiers and private owners, you know, how do we make sure that those individuals, you know, that can actually find the resources, understand what needs to be done to be able to make sure that their homes are as carbon efficient as possible it can be? So that there are extreme challenges, it's not something that's unique to Sheffield, it's nationally, it's an issue. And the housing strategy doesn't claim to be able to deal with those challenges, but we recognise the importance of them and we put it as a priority and we need to work hard to be able to make inroads into that. We have restarted our council house building programme, you know, but we are also working differently with our registered providers. You know, I referred to the Sheffield Together Housing Partnership, there is a significant amount of work that's taking place, a number of work streams there. And I think it's the strength of our partnership, the way that we're operating, that will allow us to be able to really, you know, go to task in terms of achieving some of those housing numbers going forward. I think the issue around, you know, downsizing, councillor Smith, that's been going in the rounds for some time, I think, really, and it is, you know, it's easier said than done. And trying to move somebody from a property that they might have been living for many, many years, had family and children and, you know, all their life, to say, well, actually, your property's too big for you now, I think I would like you to move. And unless there's a really good offer, an alternative, it's really difficult to do that. We can look at incentives and provide support for them, but I'm sure Suzanne will be able to make some further comments on that. And as for, you know, again, developers building what they need to build, I think the local plan and the evidence that we've gathered as part of this, and we'll be doing some strategic housing market assessments later in the year, all of that evidence will help to inform what are the needs in the city, what type of properties do we need. But, you know, and again, the strong partnership that we will have with developers will hopefully also allow us to be able to persuade and encourage them to build the right types of properties that the city needs whilst also maintaining that profit margin. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I just wanted to clarify on the older people's independent living strategy. And we've had quite a lot of discussion about what you call that particular strategy. I want to be clear that it isn't just about specialist housing and new housing, it is about all requirements. So we've got the age-friendly city, that people have got the right home at the right time. And it's in draft at the moment, we've waited so that it follows on from the housing strategy. And because it is so important, we have, we do have a significant shortfall of homes that are suitable for people as their lives move on. It will mirror the ambitions, so it will cover how do you support older people to have a home that's net zero? How do they live comfortably in their community? How do they get the support that they require? And again, a lot of that is in co-production. We have a steering group that's got representatives on it, both from internal and external parties, to make sure we're getting that right. So it isn't just about new homes or specialist homes, it's about how, and as you've said, that chain of how can people move on to the right home. In our local allocations policy, we have downsizing priorities, so people can move if they're going to be freeing up a larger property. But as Asman said, you've got to have the right attractive offer, so the whole market's got to work together. So there is specific consultation that we will be proposing around the older people's independent living strategy, that will go through to Housing Policy Committee for decision. And it's one of the junior strategies that we referred to.
Great, thank you very much. I think what this conversation so far reveals is that there are a number of different threads to this conversation, whether it's around older people, whether it's around our commitment to net zero, whether it's around housing growth and regeneration, whether it's around children's homes, whether it's around supported living. The risk is, without an overarching strategic framework within which all these issues can then sit and kind of dock into, you end up having multiple conversations from different parts of the council about each of these different things and we are not joined up and don't have a whole council approach. This is why the housing strategy is coming to this committee, Strategy and Resources, because it is a cross-cutting strategy, a tier-one strategy, that sits across everything we do and each of our committees will at some point have a relationship with this strategy. And so I think all of these points that people are raising are demonstrating why we need this overarching strategic document. I think, Kate, you wanted to come in on housing growth and then there's councillor Orton, councillor Belbin, councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to add a few points on housing growth, because that's been a theme that's been raised, in particular, how do we deliver on this strategy? And members will have noted in the forward work plan that we are actually working in parallel to ensure that delivery plans are being developed alongside the strategy. And next month's Strategy and Resources will consider a housing growth delivery plan. One of the things that I think I want to commend colleagues, both in the council but also across the system, and I include in that even nationally, Sheffield's pioneered an approach across that other parts of the country are following and in the wake of working with Homes England, with our housing associations, with the Sheffield Property Association. I'm really proud to chair our Housing Growth Board that's now in its, coming to its third year, that has cross-party representation with councillor Johnson, councillor Penny Baker as deputy chair of Housing Committee and the leader. And what we've been able to do through that is actually move well beyond a higher-level esoteric idea of partnership and actually get right into the numbers, get into a conversation where we're talking really frankly about how we work together to deliver, where we're getting into those conversations that councillor Smith raised around where there may be areas that we need to see growth and we need to see, we need to see new homes, but the development industry isn't delivering. So I just want to make that point really, that this isn't, we've not waited for this strategy to get on with that. Equally, I want to just fully endorse everything that colleagues have said, these high-level, tier-one strategies make it much more possible for us as an organisation to align our resources and our teams around these big cross-cutting priorities for the city and ensure that housing isn't just seen as something that the housing department do, but is something that all of our colleagues in children's, in adults, in city futures, in environment are working towards. So just a big thank you, because this has been a long time coming and it is a really important strategy.
Thank you very much. Councillor Orton, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the responses. I do take some assurance actually from Kate's comments just now. I mean, my follow-up, I had a couple of comments, a couple of follow-up questions from my previous questions.
Because you've joked, because you've spoken and others haven't already, to keep it quite brief, that'd be great.
Yes, but I didn't get an answer the first time. I think I'm entitled to explain what, you know, to ask why I haven't got an answer to my question the first time. Look, I agree, having a plan is important, that was my, that was my point. Having a plan is important in addition to having goals. We've had a net zero goal for, what, six, five, six years now? What's our progress on it? Well, that's the question, isn't it? Asman, you're right to say, look, there's an eye-watering cost attached to this and we haven't been clear about this in this strategy, which you'd think at a strategic level, there are strategy, there are plans that are needed as well as all the little plans underneath. What does it cost? Let's not mince words, what would it cost to achieve the net zero part or the whole strategy of the net zero part? If I had to guess, I'd say, what, five billion with a B for the council estate, fifty billion if we want to do the whole city in terms of housing in net zero? If that's, I guess now, if you've got another figure, let's hear it. And Tom, are you going to write to the government and ask for that amount of money? Is that, because if you're not, then we've abandoned the ambition straight away, haven't we? So that's my, yeah, I'll leave it at that, to be brief. That's the question, how much will you ask for it?
Thank you. Councillor Belbin, please.
Thanks. Councillor Orton puts an awful lot of faith in writing letters to the government, however... Well, and it's actually about some of the governmental changes that I wanted to raise questions. I mean, we've talked about, I'm really pleased to see an ambitious strategy and we've also talked about the many challenges around this, which I think should be, you know, they're not exclusive to Sheffield, these challenges, although I know, you know, we have talked about some of the pioneering work that we are doing. Thanks to the chief exec for drawing attention to that. But these are national challenges and the question I wanted to ask was around some of the national legislation. that is coming in. So first of all, around the Renters' Rights Bill, we haven't talked that much actually about the private sector, rented sector so far, and there's obviously lots of ambition within that as well, around AWP's law and around applying the decent home standard to private rented accommodation. So it'd be interesting to hear a little bit about how we are looking at working with private landlords to achieve that. And then around housing growth, the Planning and Infrastructure Bill 2024, which I know has got the ambition to really streamline the planning system, which may bring down some of the costs that Joe is wildly guessing at, potentially by improving our planning system, which I think has been a big barrier to housing growth nationally and in Sheffield. And it'd be useful to hear a little bit about how our ambitions have been shaped by those changes to legislation.
Thank you. Councillor Mohammed, please.
You get 12 politicians at home and you get 24 opinions. Look, I think having a plan, having a strategy is important, I absolutely get it. And what we would like to see in it, clearly you've heard some difference of opinions and it's been useful, I think, because what's really important now is what sits beneath it, the plans that come forward. Couple of areas I just want to flag up, I think we've got a lot more control over social housing. I think key to this also will be private ownership and how do we support those in terms of achieving whether it's net zero or at least dealing with some very, kind of, very old traditional homes, I live in one of them, I've got some experiences, how do we actually convince people to actually engage with the council or engage with the private sector to actually get? And, you know, if Tommy's going to write to government, I would say, let's try to pilot some stuff in Sheffield. You know, we might not have all the answers, I don't know whether we get 50 billion or not, but, you know, I remember the 1990s, Ashman might remember this as well, the enveloping schemes that we had around Sharrow, Donald, Tinsley, that really did uplift those houses and whether we could go for that sort of approach to deal with the different tenures, whether it's rented, you know, owner occupied, whatever. But I think what we've got to do now is agree the strategy today, I don't think we should not delay any further, but then really be key. And one of the things I'd like to see, Douglas, is really key, you know, we've kept 2030, we really need to have a detailed report now of how we are going to get to net zero or attempt to get to net zero by 2030 as a city, the clock is ticking. I know we declared a climate emergency a few years back, 2019, but I think, you know, we should agree the policy today, but then really, you know, start to emphasise on how do we deal with it. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much, really helpful. Let me just make a couple of points then for opening it up to the team. I don't think it is any good today to be speculating on the size of numbers, you know, this is, we are not informed here, so I think I would just want to be clear that it's not appropriate to put out kind of speculative numbers. But clearly there will be a cost, but that doesn't mean that this is entirely resting on government. So no, I won't be writing to make an unspecified request, but what I will be doing is continuing the work that I and others around this table are doing to have serious conversations with people in government, but also with investors, with institutional investors, with the private sector, because there is a huge amount of opportunity out there for people to come and work with us as we continue our work to meet our net zero ambitions. It's not, this is, if we are serious about taking through the spirit of the Housing Growth Partnership Board that Kate has talked about, that means engaging the energies and resources of a wide range of partners, rather than just constantly asking government for this. We know the fiscal situation, there is a budget in a couple of weeks' time, but what we also know is that there is a huge amount of private sector capital out there that is looking for investable propositions. And part of our task over this next period, as we start to turn this into delivery plans more concretely than the ones that already exist, is to work up opportunities where people can come and invest in the city, and that is part of the task that I'm committed to and I look forward to working cross-party on that. Ashman, I don't know if there's any further points you want to pick up?
Yeah, thanks for the comment on the numbers, I wasn't going to get drawn into that. Other than to say it's going to be expensive. So I think that answer will remain unanswered to councillor Otten in that regard. But in terms of some of the legislative changes, you know, around private rented sector, around decent homes, these are all to be welcomed. I think it's really important that, you know, the way that decent homes and the social housing sector actually uplifted the standards in social housing is, you know, significant. We also have what's sort of been badged as decent homes too, we wait for the details of that. Again, that will have implications in terms of our resources and how we improve our existing social stock going forward. But I think, you know, even having lived through decent homes in the social housing sector and how challenging it was to be able to deliver that, I think, you know, apply that to the private sector is going to be hugely challenging as well, but it's the right thing to do. So providing the support to people is important, providing the finances are actually key, how can they get access to be able to make those improvements? And let's not forget that whilst we might have a significant private sector housing market in the city, a lot of those people that own those properties generally are, you know, small landlords, one or two properties, accidental landlords. So they're the people that perhaps most need our support to be able to make sure that they can respond to some of the challenges that some of these legislative changes will make. You know, we struggle sometimes ourselves and we're quite well informed. So to expect, you know, once new rules and regulations come in, to expect landlords to be able to implement that, it's really important that our private sector housing teams are mobilising themselves to make sure that they work with that and we have a strong private sector partnership as well with landlords.
Could I just add on the private rented situation? I think it is really important to acknowledge that increasing numbers of people do live in private rented accommodation compared to social housing. And many of them would like to either own a home or live in social housing, but that's not necessarily possible at this point. And we know the voice of renters is really important. So obviously we welcome legislation, we don't know all the detail yet of what that will mean, but we did include private rent, people in private rented accommodation within the consultation. Acorn, which represent private renters, has been involved as well as an organisation in our overarching work. There are specific issues, not only about quality but affordability, security of tenure, and I think it is about, as Ashman said, recognising there are different types of landlord. We work with lots of them already, they're really good and they are the realistic option for many people to live in. So it's building that network and having the right offer for people, upholding high standards. The quality of the stock conditions in private sector is illustrated in the supporting information. So it is a really big challenge, but I think it is about being clear what our role is, both in terms of being an enabler, sometimes an enforcer, education and leading what good looks like and coordinating those opportunities, I would say. And one of the pieces of work that Georgina's team led on previously was about investment in retrofitting. And because of our good intelligence, that is cross-tenure. So having a good overarching strategy puts us in a good position for bidding for funding that is available.
Great, thank you very much indeed. Really helpful conversation today, really constructive, thanks to everybody for your questions and comments. So we have a recommendation ahead of us to consider and approve the adoption of the new ten-year housing strategy, and members happy to support that recommendation. Excellent, that is approved, thank you very much indeed. So item number 10 on our agenda will be renewing our approach to working with the communities of Sheffield, and there's a report in the PAC which people can see on page 217. And to introduce the report, we've been joined by James Henderson and Tom Smith. James, Tom, if you just want to briefly introduce yourselves and then introduce the report, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, I'm James Henderson, I'm Director of Policy and Democratic Engagement.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm Tom Smith, I'm Director of Customer Experience and Communities.
I appreciate it, we've felt like a long hour, we're still in the morning, don't worry.
Thank you. So I'm going to introduce the paper and we'll obviously take any questions and Tom may want to add some bits to my introduction. So the paper before the committee today seeks the committee's permission to begin a piece of work to develop a new community strategy for the authority. The council plan is clear that we will only achieve our ambitions by working with and for our communities if we do that in partnership. However, we don't currently have a clearly articulated strategy that sets out how we will do this across the huge number of ways that we currently work with our communities. And that includes everything from community safety, to our community assets, to community involvement, to our local democracy and more widely as well. By getting this right, it will also help the city council to support the ongoing achievement of the city goals, and particularly the set of goals that focus on belonging to welcoming communities that care for one another and support people to have safe and fulfilling lives. There is some brilliant work going on across our organisation already, but it is a bit fragmented, it's perhaps not as connected or as purposeful as it might be. And therefore, the need for a piece of work that looks at a community strategy is also driven by the expectation set out in the Future Sheffield Programme and the council's new target operating model as part of that programme requires and demands frankly that the organisation prioritises the needs of our customers and our communities and orient how we work around ensuring excellent customer experience. And that customer experience is driven by the interactions that our services have with our communities on a daily basis, which is why having this in place is such a fundamental part of our strategic framework and why frankly it represents a key gap for us at the current time. We do envisage that the new strategy will be a high-level tier-one strategy that sits underneath the council plan. It will inform and be supported by other more detailed plans, including things like the Community Safety Plan or the work that the Governance Committee is currently undertaking on community engagement and involvement. It is, if we get it right, a genuinely cross-cutting piece of work and it will influence and shape how the council works across much of our service delivery in line with that target operating model. And that will include a broad range of community-focused services, so everything from housing, which we've just been talking about, to community safety, to family centres, to youth services. So we want to take our time to get this right. It is going to be a significant piece of work and it's important, an important piece of work that should guide all of our interactions with our communities. And we recognise that communities take many shapes and forms and that most people in the city belong to multiple communities, those that are geographically based in neighbourhoods or local areas, those that reflect shared identities, cultures or interests, or those that reflect other aspects of people's lives such as work or school. So our approach has to reflect the diversity of what people mean when they say 'community', and we recognise that we already have a lot of evidence and information that people have provided to us about what they would like to see for their communities, whatever form that might take. So we will make use of that evidence and information wherever we can through this piece of work if the committee supports it. And we'll supplement that where it's needed by involving and engaging all of our communities through the process of development. So as such, the paper proposes that we take the next six months to develop the strategy, working closely with partners and stakeholders to gain their insights and ideas as we co-design the work. So that will include working with local area committees or parish councils where they exist, but it will also include close working with voluntary community, faith and social enterprise sectors in the city. We're clear going into this that our VCFS-E sector is a critical enabler of strong and sustainable communities. And it will of course mean working directly with the people of Sheffield across all of our different communities. The paper proposes that we bring a draft of the strategy back to the committee in the early part of the summer and that a member working group is formed to oversee and guide that development. Finally, before I finish, just want to draw attention to the two appendices that sit as part of the paper, which the committee are asked to note. The first of those sets out how the city responded to the racist and Islamophobic violence that we saw in parts of the country over the summer and describes both the emergency response in the city and the community response, which provided a huge amount of reassurance and support to affected communities and the way in which leaders from all sectors came together to demonstrate their solidarity. The work to recover from what happened across the country and respond to that will be ongoing. And I'd like particularly to mention the work of the Evidence by Experts Programme that the Sheffield City of Sanctuary are undertaking. They've set out an initial report informed by lived experience, which sets out the fear and anxiety that the disorder, the violent disorder caused for so many in the city and the ongoing need for solidarity. Finally, the second appendix responds to a full council motion, which asks the committee to reaffirm Sheffield as a City of Sanctuary and to set out how the council works with the Home Office and its contractors to support refugees and asylum seekers in the city. It notes that the hostile environment policy that concerned full, that had concerned full council is no longer being pursued and that the context is substantially different to that when the motion was passed, whilst recognising that this remains a significant issue nationally and within the city. It sets out some of the recent changes in government policy in this area and describes the work that is being done in partnership with the VCFS-E sector to support those in our city seeking asylum or with refugee status. And that appendix requests the committee's support for the reaccreditation of Sheffield as a local Authority of Sanctuary, which is the new designation replacing the old City of Sanctuary description. So I'll stop there, but hopefully that just gives an overview of what's in the report, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, James. I've got a number of members who've indicated, I've got four so far, so I'm going to take the first three, which is councillor Belbin, councillor Smith, councillor Crossland, please.
Thank you, really, really welcome this piece of work. I wanted to draw attention, there's a really helpful little diagram of page 221 of the papers here that is relevant to the previous discussion as well actually, that talks about your tier-one strategies, that this is these big overarching strategies that are delivered over five years or more and how tier-two strategies and tier-three delivery plans and service plans all sit together within this. And I think that's a really helpful way of looking at how we actually deliver on these big high-level strategies. But yes, absolutely welcome this piece of work, I'm a huge champion for the voluntary community and faith, social enterprise sector in this city. I think we've got some fantastic expertise and leadership in the sector. And I think that was really demonstrated actually, and you can see it in the paper around the response to the riots and how people really worked together very effectively and made sure that we had reach into communities as partnerships and worked together really effectively, even in what you could call a crisis situation where we had to respond very, very quickly. And I think, you know, involving, how we involve the development of this strategy, how we're involving partners is absolutely crucial to making it a meaningful and helpful piece of work going forward. So yes, just wanted to welcome it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just start by adding my condemnation of those horrible events that took place recently? Absolutely inexcusable, no place in our society. I just wanted to reflect on the fact that, you know, as well as looking to the future, which is what this document does, we have to learn from the past. And there was one sentence that jumped out of this report in section 2.2. It says, "The council lacks a clear, consistent and overarching ambition for how we work with and for the communities of Sheffield." Some people might say that's exactly what the council should be doing and that's what we're here for. So I just wondered whether you have any thoughts on how on earth the council got itself into a position where we did lack that clear, consistent ambition for how we work for the people of Sheffield? Thank you.
Okay, councillor Crossland, please.
Thank you, Chair. Unsurprisingly, I've got a lot of thoughts on this, but I'll save a lot of the detailed thoughts for future input. I think too often in this city we've confused neighbourhoods with communities when they are not the same. are not the same, like communities are other people who play board games in the central library or the people who take their dogs for a walk around the park who probably know the name of the dogs but not the people. They're also the communities that we have to look after and I've often been a critic of things coming to strategy and resources which should probably go to policy committees, but for once I'm going to contradict myself because there are clear cross-cutting issues here because this does involve housing, this does involve transport and children's and public health, they all have an input on our communities. So I think it's probably right that this top-level strategy does come here. Of course, it should have quite a lot from the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee. But something reflecting on the discussions that we had on the previous item, I think that while it's good to know where we're going with a strategy, it would be good to have some sort of delivery metrics front and centre in this so we know that the delivery strategies under this are actually delivering. So we can look back and say that things are successful and that we know that those delivery strategies are relevant to our overarching tier-one strategy as well. So I hope that we can do that as well.
Thank you very much councillor Crossland, I'm sure that there will be lots of opportunities for CPL, Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee through the cross-party member reference group to be fully involved in this work. It's also worth, just I guess for everyone's benefit, we approved earlier this year a new performance framework for the council and so when we have the council plan and then tier-one strategies, there are clear performance metrics which we will be able to use to assess how we are performing against those strategies and deliverable outcomes. So Finance Committee, as you know, became Finance and Performance Committee and regular reports are now going to that committee to make sure that we are keeping a visible look at how we are performing against that framework. So that's a big step forward, I believe. So I've got a number of colleagues who want to come in, so I'll take a second round, but let me just come back to James and Tom for some comments. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, so yeah, just so I guess to cover the three questions. So the first one, just in terms of voluntary, the involvement of voluntary community faith sector in the city, absolutely key to this and I think probably the biggest reflection on this is that whilst it will be a strategy that will cut across the council and be signed off being, you know, ultimately in this committee, we want this strategy to be a strategy for the city, not just for the council actually. So this is very much about how we engage with all the other organisations and stakeholders that have a stake in communities and how we ensure that the council is genuinely supporting that work outside of the council as well as inside it. I think, you know, it's probably what James said in terms of, you know, the backward-looking bit and the comments about how we got here. I think it is important to reflect what James said actually, that at the frontline of the city, there is huge amount of really positive work taking place, a huge amount and a huge amount of work taking place into the voluntary sector and with us and you look at the response to the awful events of August and you can see how actually the city came together really well to respond to that. I think the reflection really is that we've not had something that allows people outside the council in particular to engage really effectively with the council and seek the support in the right way. And I think when we talk about the gap, that feels like the biggest gap and it's almost one of coordination as much as anything else and strategic fit so that organisations can really clearly see where we're going and map their future plans and everything with that. So I haven't really got a reflection on how we got here because I wasn't here frankly, but I guess I would just want to reflect that there's actually genuinely some really good frontline work going on, it probably just needs to hang better together as a piece of strategic work so it has best effect going forward into the future. Obviously, in terms of the involvement in Community, Parks and Leisure Committee will be really, really key to this as we go forward and I think as much as members will want it, we as officers and the officers driving the strategy will really clearly want to see accountability for the delivery of the elements within the strategy and the delivery of those plans underneath it, so we will be looking to develop that going forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Otten, councillor Dale, councillor Agencio.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for this report. I just want to touch on a couple of points relating to appendix one and the incidents in August. The first is, we discussed this actually at some length at the Emergency Planning Joint Committee we have with Rotherham yesterday. And I won't go into all of that, no, of course the events in Rotherham were much, much more serious than those in Sheffield, absolutely appalling. But the observation that the work of the police in, you know, being visible and present in the communities and the places that were at risk, the mosques in particular, I think is something to be commended. The challenge it is on the police to maintain a high level of presence in a large number of places over time is extremely challenging and I think we should, you know, obviously commend them on their efforts. It's a concern, particularly given that we know that there's a £63 million missing in the, or what, accounting error, whatever it is, in the police budget. You know, whether they'll be able to do that if this were to happen again. So I, you know, I think it's something we should be alert to. The other point relating to this I wanted to make and it's not mentioned here, but it's come up in Wasteland Street scene and that is the issue of taxis being at risk of, well, being threatened, at risk of stone-throwing and so on. It's something we take an interest in because obviously it's our duty to have policy affecting taxis and, you know, for the safety of drivers and of course passengers. Now, this was raised with us during the disturbances and we referred it to the Gold Incident Command quite correctly because, you know, it was asked if we could waive the signage requirements, we referred this to the Gold Incident Command, I think which is the correct thing to do. They decided not to take any action on the signage and actually by the time it got to that, that the incidents more or less, it turned out, had petered out or that we didn't know, you know, we didn't know how quickly that would happen. We are reviewing the signage nonetheless anyway, as we'd committed to do a year ago because we do actually require more signage on taxis than is the statutory guidance and there are reasons for that, but so we are looking at it. We were hoping to do that this year, but there's been insufficient agreement, I think, let's put it that way, and we are having to, we are rightly doing it and doing further consultation with interested parties because there are questions we had over taxi signage. But look, I and other members of Wasteland Street scene and Presuming of Licensing are constantly getting our ears bent saying, look, the taxis at risk of stones are being thrown. And it's always been an issue, but, you know, the sense is that that still remains and it does need to be, does need to be looked at. So I just wanted to, you know, say that we are looking at and I hope we can make progress on it.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I think it's worth saying, obviously it's playing out at Wasteland Street scene committee and Licensing Committee will be involved, so, you know, keenly we don't sort of wade into other committees' territory right here today, but thank you for raising those points and I'm sure we'll have further discussions about them in groups separate from this meeting, but thank you. Councillor Dale, please.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to first of all thank the voluntary community sector for the work that they did in August. You know, it's not just about the support that they gave to communities in August under those terrible circumstances, it's about the ongoing work that community organisations do and have done for many years in communities under very sometimes very difficult and complex circumstances. So I'd like to thank voluntary community sector organisations for that. This is quite refreshing, I do have to declare an interest, I do work in voluntary community sector and over the last 14 years, it has become really difficult actually, knowing from one year to another whether or not staff are going to have jobs, whether or not the projects that we run in communities are going to be sustainable. And I think having a strategy like this and, you know, looking at the government moving forward with our, with looking at the three-year settlements, I think it's come at a timely, a timely time with regards to this strategy being in place and then ensuring that the work that we do do in communities in partnership is actually sustainable and we can plan ahead rather than be planning year on year trying to support our communities and develop and grow. So I'd just like to, I'm really excited, I mean, September 2025 is good, but, you know, I won't want to rush it and not get it right, but I think it needs to kind of get on with it real. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Dale, councillor Agencio, please.
Yes, can I echo what councillor Dale's just said, it's like our work in the voluntary sector, so yeah, it's a really important piece of work. I also want to say, you know, echo the thanks to the community and voluntary sector, but also can I also highlight how wonderful our officers were in those terrible few weeks and, you know, the Central Act officers were incredible and I attended one of the events that they organised for women and children only that were scared to go out. So it was, you know, it was just incredible how much work they put into it. I mean, they work all the time, but it was particularly noticeable at that time. I have a few questions on appendix two, on page 235, Roman number six, calling the government to recognise, this is on the Responsible Council Resolution reaffirming Sheffield as a City of Sanctuary, calling the government to recognise the impact of climate change as legitimate reason for to seek safety. The answer there is that because somehow the government, the colour of the government's changed, we don't need to do anything. I mean, there is no indication that the current colour government is going to do anything about it. So as that was formally voted in a motion, you know, I disagree that we shouldn't do anything and likewise, Roman number seven, calling the government to set a clear target to processing future asylum claims. Again, there is no indication that any changes will be made to the current situation, so because it was in a formal motion voted by full council, I think we should still look into that. And Roman number nine, calling the government to ensure that families who have children settled in school are no longer required to move accommodation. Again, there are no changes planned, so we voted on this and it was passed in full council. And finally, just in terms of curiosity, because this is something I'm very passionate about, I wonder whether, and not just for this particular champion, whether there are any plans on having reports on what the champions actually do and, you know, what changes it makes or, you know, not necessarily changes, but we, you know, we have these, you know, we have a heritage champion, we have a migrant champion, but what have they actually done? And could we suggest that there is a report, just out of, you know, it doesn't have to be an official thing, just to say this is the things we've attended, this is what we've done, it would be nice to know that, you know, because otherwise we may as well not give them the extra work.
Thank you very much. Right, I'll come back to colleagues, I think, you know, a number of people have made, said thank-yous today and I think, you know, let's just all agree that we want to say thank you to the police for protecting communities in early August whilst the violent racist and Islamophobic disorder took place, to council officer staff who did a huge amount of work again to coordinate the response, but also to the voluntary community sector who again supported communities who were experiencing, you know, deep anxiety and trauma about what we were seeing and are continuing to do so. This trauma, this fear and anxiety remains at a less heightened level, but it is still there and this is, you know, demonstrating why this work is so important because we know that in order to respond to that, the communities of our city, there needs to be a proper plan to do so. This is what this is setting out, a recommendation for us to progress our work so we have a clear way of working. So James and Tom, do you want to come back in any points there, please? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, so I'll just pick up a couple of points and then hand over to Tom. So just on councillor Dale's point about the strain that the voluntary community and faith sector has been under, I think that is something that certainly I've seen in talking to colleagues from the sector and I think that we really want the sustainability of that work to run at the heart of how we both develop the strategy and then the actual strategic intent that comes from that. So I think that is going to be absolutely central to it. I'll ask Tom to comment on the points regarding the petition, but just councillor Agencio on your final point about reports on the work undertaken by different champions appointed by full council, it's probably something we'd have to take back and have a conversation either with WIPs or with the Governance Committee about, but I'm happy to do that if that's something that members would like us to do. Tom, do you want to pick up?
Yeah, thanks James. And I think probably just to reflect that the response within the resolution or to the resolution, it's a kind of evolving position at a national government level to be honest in this space and some of the conversations we're having are indicating that, you know, there is potential some space in terms of some change. So the reason we've reflected it in this way is to reflect that evolving position actually, but there's no reason at all why we can't think about how we might, you know, call on the government in some of the spaces you've outlined there, councillor Agencio anyway, and reflect those things into the conversation that we're having with government especially into the Home Office and our relationship there as well. Do you want to come back?
I kind of sort of disagree on that because we voted on this in full council, so it's something that we need to do in a timely way and in a way it could help because we could, if they're already going in that direction, we could nudge them and so that they cannot, because we've got so, I kind of understand the position of colleagues in terms of, you know, the private conversations that they may have, but this was a council motion that was voted cross-party, however, it was voted and, you know, with the amendments and everything, but it passed. At the moment, we have no indication that the current government is doing anything about this. You know, they might do nothing, but we've taken a stand and last year, yeah, and it's over a year later. So I think I kind of disagree that we just see how the evolving situation, I think it's important to also, you know, remind ourselves that we have taken certain positions.
Okay, well, the appendix is set out as it is, I think, you know, if we want to have a separate conversation about, you know, picking up any concerns about that and recognising that this is an ongoing conversation about a changing situation as Tom has outlined, then we can certainly do that sort of outside this meeting if that would be helpful. Just briefly.
Yeah, I mean, I just wonder if we could just formally note that actually what is highlighted is that some of these things have been resolved by full council as action points have not been done. And just to acknowledge for the minutes at least that there is further work to be done on some of the items in appendix two.
I think we can pick it up in the minutes for sure because that's, you know, it'll be reflected in the discussion. Okay, so, thank you. Number of recommendations then, so you request officers to initiate development of a new community strategy, to approve the establishment of a cross-party member reference group, to of the city's community and the council to the violent disorder that affected the country in the summer and to note the information in appendix two about. End of the meeting, my mic is packing up. Are people happy with those recommendations? Thank you all very much indeed. That then is the end of the meeting, thank you all very much for your contributions today.